Ben Lawrence Mayer.
Clark C.R. Nelson, council member.
Greg Schneider, council member.
Mike Warrington, council member.
Mike Keller, police chief.
Donna Davis, chief financial officer.
Andy Seville, assistant fire chief.
Jennifer McCosland, assistant city administrator.
J.T. Klaus, city attorney.
Les Mangus, director of public works.
Susan Renner, city clerk.
Mark Datter, city administrator.
Item three is the invocation. Chief, I don't see anybody from our alliance here this evening. Okay. Troy, would you want to lead us again?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor heads, please. God be with us tonight as we talk about and discuss the different things in our city and be in our hearts and minds of us and everyone here to guide us in the right ways. We thank you for the blessing to be able to do this in our city and in our country and pray that you continue to help it to be so and for those especially or less fortunate to help them find food, shelter, and love tonight in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Would you stand with us for the pledge? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to everybody for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number five this evening is the public forum. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? That must be Caroline. We'll move, close the public forum, move on to acceptance of the agenda. Am I correct? Nothing new this evening? Everything's been...
It was updated today.
Right.
Just added two seconds to the session.
Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right. A motion by C.R., second by Mike, to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion.
Yes. If we have...
Go on.
If we have an item that we would like to have possibly vote taken on, can that still be done for member items? I wouldn't have to add it to the agenda?
It could.
Okay.
At your pleasure, but maybe...
Well, it was what we discussed last night at workshop, just to see if this group wants to have the... An amendment made to an ordinance that would allow that hiring of a service that comes in and grazes. Some...
Oh.
We talked a little bit about it and it seems like other cities are doing it and we're just not.
What if we discuss it in member items and then we can put it on the agenda next time?
Is that okay? But I was just thinking that if we could get it, if we had an agreement, then we could possibly next time vote on it.
Right.
Move it to the ordinance.
Right.
We couldn't vote now anyway. There's no ordinance written for us to vote on.
Right.
I agree. Okay, so you're saying it could all be accomplished in one time? Okay, that's fine.
It could. Probably in a hurry.
Well, it might be.
They're hungry, Troy.
Grass is growing.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to accept the agenda as presented. Further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven. We have a presentation this evening in the Augusta Chamber of Commerce. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Hefkin. I am the director of the Augusta Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today as part of the Butler County Act Task Team. We're a team comprised of the Augusta, Andover, and El Dorado chambers, Butler Community College, and the Workforce Center. Joining me today is Jordan with the El Dorado Chamber, Alitra Chaney Prophet with Butler Community College, and Becky Wolf with the Andover Chamber. Thank you for taking the time to hear about what we've been working on to enhance workforce in Butler County. We have started an initiative to have Butler County become an ACT work-ready community. That means we will have a leadership team consistently working on our county's need to fill jobs, retain talent, and close a skills gap in our community. Our vision is to revolutionize the workforce in Butler County so that we can better retain businesses and talent. Our mission is to develop collaborative relationships to stimulate the workforce pipeline in Butler County. That's where you come in. We are visiting with the El Dorado, Augusta, and Andover elected officials to introduce you to our initiative and garner your support. The initiative to become a work-ready community can take up to two years. That process is being funded by Butler County and Butler Community College. All we're asking today is that you will recognize and support the task team as we venture to become a work-ready community. To explain in more detail, Jordan Buxton will present.
Hello, I am Jordan Buxton. I'm the director of the El Dorado Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for having us this evening. We are a part of a task team that is working to be recognized as this work-ready community. Well, what is that exactly? ACT is who this is through. We were selected and went to a boot camp in which we were kind of educated and informed on what this administering and testing tool was. So, the Kansas Department of Education pays for all of the juniors in the state of Kansas to take the ACT. Well, I'll come to find out there's actually two forms. There's the ACT College Prep Assessment and then there's also what we refer to as the National Career Readiness Certificate, previously known as Work Keys. Some of you might be familiar with that concept. So what we are trying to do in becoming this work-ready community is really partnering with those educators, those parents, those students, and working to create this singular pipeline and language when we're talking about workforce and all working together with the educators as well as us educating the businesses on what this tool is. So in the work-ready community, we have different categories and goals that we have to achieve. These numbers or goals were given to us by numbers that we submitted to ACT based upon our community sizes, our business sizes, our employment rates, our graduation rates, things of that nature. So there's four different categories in which we're looking to reach our goals. There's an emerging workforce, which are going to be those juniors that are taking those tests. So they have a free test right now. They've got a tool that's going to be able to measure them on a bronze, silver, gold, or platinum level that's going to tell them any sort of skills gap they might have in applied math, graphic literacy, and inferred workplace documents. So it gives them this measuring tool. It also is including some of those essential skills within that, which, as you know, we visit with businesses. We're missing some of that in these up-and-coming youth that we're hiring. So with us working together with the schools and the educators, we just recently presented to the Butler County superintendents in which we talked about this and how we would love to help them to educate their parents and promote this to the students. Because as we're encouraging these students to take this exam, as chambers and community partners, we're all working really hard to take some time and educate our businesses on what this can do for them. So that's where our other goals come in. We have a transitioning workforce. That's going to be any of those that are leaving post-secondary education, so they're graduating from a four-year or a two-year university and they're entering the workforce. As a county, in two years, we have to have 880 take that. Right now, I will tell you, we are at about 802. So as a county, we're on pace for this. I talked about those emerging students. We have to have 654 students take this exam in Butler County in order to reach our goals. When we started this initiative, the 18 and 19 numbers had not been updated for ACT yet and we sat at 56 for a long while. Those numbers were just submitted about the beginning of the summer here and we're at 252 students in Butler County. That's with no form of promotion, no form of education on this. So the work that we have with our chambers and our communities and our education partners, I'm really confident that we're going to be able to put the right tools and resources in place to encourage those students to take this test and build those numbers up. We also have our current workforce. That's our current job seekers, those adult jobs. We have to have 697 in two years. We currently have 806. We are reaching our goals in all of these categories except for our emerging. That's where we're at. We're very fortunate in Butler County, one of our largest employers in El Dorado, the Holly Frontier Refinery. They require that all of their applicants take this exam in order to even be considered. They've gone through what's called job profiling, which allows them to really pinpoint what it is that they need in each of those jobs and then their applicants have to score certain scores on this. So while we are talking about the education side and how we want these students to take it, we also want these businesses to know what's available to them as additional HR resources and vetting. I mean, it's a vetting tool for these employers. So we've partnered with Kansas Workforce on this and they have this really great partnership with the Kansas Department of Commerce that allows them to give this exam for free through their partnerships with businesses. So, once again, all free. They're like an HR extension. So when we're asking our businesses, you know, what's going on? They've got unemployment problems, they've got retention problems, they've got skills gaps problems. So we have these conversations with these businesses. But now we're turning around and are sitting at the table with the superintendents, with the principals, with the counselors, with those curriculum builders, and really pinpointing where our skills gaps are and what we can do to collectively partner, to train these students, these adult job seekers, and really help our businesses out. I'm sure some of you are business owners. You know, a resume is only as good as it goes. Anybody can Google anything and put that on a resume. You're going to spend the next week to six months figuring out what that employee can actually do. This testing certificate, this National Career Readiness Certificate, allows you to kind of have a vetting period there. You're going to be able to say, if I have a silver level, that might mean, not my, excuse me, might not mean that he knows exactly how to do the job that you need him to do, but he has the skills, knowledge, and resources available to learn to do that job. So it's going to allow us to start really lining these jobs up and also educating and promoting on other types of industry that we have here in our community. So I'm proud to say that we've partnered with Butler Community College. They are part of that emerging and transitioning numbers there. And I'll let Alitra Chaney Prophet, who is the director of career services, kind of tell you how that works.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. One of the questions that we've gotten from educators is that they test students enough, so why is this so important? But the ACT is a vehicle that we're using. We're not promoting ACT per se, but they have established the work-ready communities across the country. And some of the things that they have discovered is that it does improve retention. It gives them a better candidate pool that better aligns with the jobs that they have and it saves them money on onboarding staff because they're able to retain those that they are onboarding. At Butler Community College, we recognize that the partnership between employment, employers, and education and the community is very essential to building a greater workforce and that's what we're here to support. And as a college, one of the things that we're working on is being able to offer college credit as an incentive for high school students to take this exam. And so once that happens, that would be a great credit for prior learning and so we're happy to extend that in Butler County and to better strengthen our partnerships. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
We appreciate the presentation. Also, do I have anything to add?
Do all the high school counselors have this test? And if they do, when will these tests be taken?
Yes. So all the high school counselors do have access to this exam. They probably might not know that. But the ACT is given in the springtime, I believe. Early spring. ACT, the College Prep Assessment, is given on a Thursday. The National Career Readiness Certificate exam is given the very next day on that Friday. And students can take both.
Okay. Are the counselors or you guys, are y'all telling the students only or are you telling the parents?
No, we are working to get in with the parents. So we have counselors that we're meeting with and also introducing some of those essential skills curriculum into there. We share information. We're working on different types of supporting events that will continue to support the campaign of the workforce initiative. Career expos, job fairs, job shadow days, those things.
I have two high schoolers, so they don't tell us anything.
Yeah.
As you probably know, and so when it comes from the school, we see it or from the counselor, we see it.
Okay.
But that's why I was asking you that.
Yeah. Yeah, we would love to get in front of all of the counselors. We hear it from the superintendents and we hear it from the principals. We've got to get in front of the counselors, so, yeah. You're welcome.
Troy, a quick question would be if a junior were to take the test and it shows them where their holes are, what is done then to fill those holes? Is it a school thing? Is it part of ACT?
So it's... It becomes a process at that point because you change from the Department of Education on to the Department of Commerce. But we're working with the schools to kind of figure out how we can maintain and manage this long-term. So workforce is a free resource that we have and those students who might be 17 and taking it as a junior and being funded by the Department of Commerce can also create a job profile, an account within workforce. And I'll let Alitra, this is kind of her lane. She's got workforce history here.
So if a student is deficient in a certain area, there's online curriculum and it's free. It's just internet-based and they can get on and they can practice. And so it will show them where they start to have problems and then it'll take them through a tutorial so that they can build up their skill in a certain area and on a certain level.
Is this all... So how are they made aware of their gaps and then where to go to fill those gaps? And I guess a question, you know, looking back would be, okay, they're going to take the test, but is there a way for them to assess themselves prior to that and try to fill those gaps before they have to take the test so they don't have to do it multiple times?
Absolutely. They can actually do the curriculum prior to taking the test the first time to see where they are. If they test, you can test out and so if you pass all levels, then you are essentially ready to take the actual exam. But if there is a level that a person is stumbling on, it'll start them at that particular level so they don't have to start from the very, very base of the test. It just starts from where they need remediation.
How young do you think that you would recommend them start looking into it? I have a junior, so I mean, should he have started as a freshman looking at this or...
Um, I don't think it ever hurts, but I think that as the tools that they're learning through their freshman and sophomore and even part of their junior year kind of prepares them for some of the assessment that's on the math portion of that. So I think that the introduction to that is fine and as long as it's in our schools, which is what we're promoting, then they can have access at any time to go in and take that. They just have to register and they can register through the workforce centers or through their schools.
That information's in here?
Yes.
Yeah? Cool. Thank you.
You can take it more than once?
You can take it more than once.
So really the counselor should try to have everybody take it?
That's what we would like to see because everybody's not going to go on to college anyway and this would be a great way for them to start to see where they need to work on and get that remediation early on.
How long of a test is it?
It's about a three and a half hour test. It's, each segment is 55 minutes and so depending on how quickly a student can go through that, they can advance to the next exam as quickly as they get done. So it could be very much so. 55 minutes is the time limit for, per test.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's going to have to take the test? I'd be in trouble.
Can we take the test?
I don't know if you can get me to sit 55 minutes at one time. All right, move on to item number eight. We have a request this evening from the Andover Central High School Football Gridiron Club, I believe. Come on up to the podium.
Hi, my name is Ryan Barkdahl. I'm here to represent the Central Gridiron Football Club. It's a new organization this year. It's a nonprofit organization. Our whole key and goal to our organization is to promote that football matters in our community. We've seen a sharp drop off in numbers in the youth football and which, I coached the middle school football and now we're seeing the reflection in the middle school football. A lot of that is through concussions and, you know, stuff like that and other activities. Soccer being played in the fall and, you know, boys wanting to go both ways. The main goal behind us is to promote football in our Andover Central community. Andover has their groups that do their things and this is a group that focuses on Andover Central. The event that we're asking for, we're requesting to waive the fee on the use of the amphitheater on October 9th. The, we're going to use it for about two hours that evening. What we're going to do is put on a pep rally and we're going to introduce all the third grade football teams, fourth grade football teams, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh, eighth, and then after that, we're going to take a little break and then we're going to bring in the high school. We're involving the high school band, we're involving the high school cheerleaders, the dance team, all the junior football cheerleaders that, you know, the organization that cheer for the junior cheerleaders. Just the student body, you know, we're trying to involve the whole entire school. It's going to be a fun activity. It's something that we're going to try to do on a yearly basis. We're trying to get as much involvement from the community. We'd like it to become a community event. We'd request that if, you know, we're going to do it whether we get the, you know, the fee waived or not. You know, if we get the fee waived, that's great because that's more money that can stay in the budget to do things for the football teams, you know, from the youth all the way up through the high school level. You know, the event's going to be there. We're going to request that the city helps promote, you know, through their amphitheater promotions and we'd like to, you know, have as much of the community's support there as possible. We're just trying to push a community event and, you know, we're just here to request that the fee be waived and save some money for another good cause. So it's going to be a two-hour event from seven o'clock to nine o'clock that evening and we're going to have food trucks there that are coming in from... Freddy's Food Trucks are going to come in and serve, you know, if people want to purchase foods and stuff like that. There's going to, it's just going to be a big community pep rally. Lots of band, lots of cheers, try to involve the crowd going back and forth and, you know, a lot of fun. It's homecoming week for the varsity team. The junior teams have a home game the Saturday before and the Saturday after. It's their last two home games, so they're real excited about it as well. So we just think it's going to be a real fun activity for the community and we just would hope that we could save the club a little bit of money and waive the fee on that. So that's our request. If you have any questions about the activity you want to ask or the club, that's fine.
I do have a question.
Absolutely.
I thought you were saying seven to nine. What I'm reading here is saying 5:00 P.M. to midnight.
That's the block that is, that's the block that we're reserving the amphitheater, but our event is from seven to nine.
Oh, okay.
There's a high school choir concert going on the same night and so a lot of our juniors football teams will come through at seven to about eight and then the high school choir concert's over about eight. And so the high school football teams, dancers, cheerleaders that aren't involved in choir will be able to come over right after that and we'll have the high school portion of it as well. So that's where the seven to nine is. It's just they block it off in four hours, you know, half-day sections.
And that's a Wednesday night then?
Yes, ma'am, Wednesday night.
Okay, I was just wondering because we've had recent, some late noises on some of our other concerts and wanted to make sure we weren't going to have a high school band blaring at midnight.
Nope, we'll be done. We might be, you know, if things get crazy, it might go 10 or minutes after or something like that.
Right, but if it's over by 10, I think we'll be fine.
Yeah, we'll be all right there, so.
Is that a motion?
Any other questions?
I guess my only additional thing was I would be happy to make a motion to do that, but if we're looking at some kind of needing of staff or some... If you're going to provide all the workers for this and all that, then I don't see any problem with that, but if...
Yeah, we're going to provide, we'll have, we'll clean up. We'll set up what we can. One request I do have, I know the GAD days are coming right before that and they have a bunch of bleachers over in that area. We were going to talk if, and see if we could get those left up for a week or so so we may be able to use them as part of the community event and then they'd have to be moved out after that. But that's something we would coordinate with the facility directors. But, yeah, we'll have our own staffing to coordinate it and we'll clean it up and take care of it.
All right, very good. Yes, I would move to approve that request.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Questioned by Caroline, seconded by Brian to approve the Gridiron Club request to waive the fees for the use of the Capitol Federal Amphitheater on October 9th from 5:00 P.M. to midnight. Further discussion?
I have a couple of questions, Ryan. So my understanding is this is a new organization?
Yes.
And it's to promote football?
Yes.
And I understand that the schools already have a organization that's very similar that's set up to promote football.
They promote all activities and the booster club...
The booster club, sure.
And they promote, they're a wonderful club that promotes all the activities for the high school and even trickle down to some of the middle school. I mean, they do everything. They generate, raise money for, other than Dan. I mean, anything that, activity-wise that the school needs, they do their best and they do what they can to help fund that. The Central Gridiron Club was founded with, we're trying to help all ages of football from third grade all the way up through varsity, including varsity, because there's some needs and there's some good relationships through the people at the Gridiron. Most of us have children that play high school football, middle school football, and youth football as well. So we're going to be involved in all aspects of it. We're going to do what we can to promote and help football in a whole, in our community, at the Andover Central community.
Okay. And then I guess I'd have a question about this type of organization and how we manage or how in the past we've given the, given or waived the fee for this. Is there any other very similar instances where we've done that? Because we already have a 501(c)(3) price, right?
We do, yes. So generally speaking, I would say staff would never waive a fee without council's blessing. So that's why this is before you tonight unless it was through the school agreement that was worked out with USD regarding, they used the lodge this week to do a teacher training, but that was through USD, so that was a part of that agreement. This is an extension, so that's why you're hearing about this one. So, but staff doesn't feel like we have the authority to waive the fee as it's written right now.
We were just requesting it as, we're trying to build a really good community event and we feel like it's going to benefit the entire community by bringing an event. So that's why we were making the request. We understand that we're not affiliated directly with the school, but I felt that it was more of a community event than just a school event.
Mark, have we had any other non-school activities request?
So the amphitheater stage specifically is not, has not been as common. Of course, we've only been talking about this for a year and a half. You know, I will say we probably need to tighten up what we do in terms of waivers because every, we have people come through all the time that we waive fees for at the park, the lodge, and stuff like that. I don't have the whole list in front of me, but everything from Easter egg hunt since I've been here to Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and, I mean, we just haven't had too many people who've come up here. The amphitheater is a little unique in consideration of those things, but we really have never come up with a criteria for, except that we said we were going to allow the school district and I think the community college, but the school district by agreement to use this for their activities. This isn't directly affiliated with the school, so it doesn't fall under that category. But it has been difficult because we've just kind of taken for granted when any type of non-for-profit comes up here, we're going to approve fees because I've never seen us turn one down.
Mark, the difference so far that I have heard is this is not a school function. It's not part of the school.
I would say that it's about as much a school function as it can get, just hosted by a nonprofit organization because everybody that's going to be involved in it is directly a school coach.
Do you have the support of the...
The athletic director is highly behind it. He's, we asked for his permission because we just didn't want to go up and throw an event without asking, can the football team come? Can the cheerleaders come? Can the band come? Can the dance come? So everybody that's involved is directly with the school. It's just an outside source kind of hosting it and putting it on.
I'll just say it's confusing to me on what your legal relationship is to the school and in...
I understand.
...consideration for what our waiving rights might be.
That's, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
I view your organization as some, similar to a booster club, but you're just football-specific.
Exactly.
This did remind me, we did have the Andover Foundation, which is not the school. It would be a very similar situation. So they raise money for the school, but they are not the school. They did an event out there and I had forgotten about that one and that was actually at the amphitheater last year, I believe.
And we waived the fees for that?
Yes.
We did.
And that was a district-wide?
It was an Andover Advantage.
Correct, which is also correct. Yeah, not specific to one.
And all their, and all their funds go directly to the school. I mean, they can't sponsor the Rotary Club.
I'm going to say, to give an idea of what I would make an exception of, is if this was some school out of Wichita coming to ask me to do this, my answer would not have been the same as what it is this evening to the, to somebody who is, you know, actually within our own school district. So I still feel like I would support what they're asking to do, but I understand it, you know, and we get to vote, so they're willing to...
And we understand too. It's just, you know, if we don't ask, we're just trying to help save some money to go towards other functions and so that's, you know, we completely understand.
Well then, we have a motion by Caroline... Well then, we have a motion by Caroline and seconded by Brian to approve the waiving of fees. Further discussion? In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You'll get with, um, you'll get with our staff to make the arrangements. Have you filled out a reservation form?
Yes, sir.
You've got all that, okay. You're good.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening.
All right, move on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What was that vote?
Four to two.
Okay.
Four to two. C R. and Mike dissented. Am I the only one that couldn't hear that? You heard it? You heard it? Okay. It's tough to hear when you're up here and the voices are projected that way. That's why you got two ears, one on each side. Item nine is consent agenda. I'm, it's nine point one through nine point seven. Is there a motion to approve? So moved?
Second.
Question by Troy, seconded by Brian to approve the consent agenda. Further discussion? In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, cereal malt beverages license. Apparently they're new ownership, is that right? Talking about Gambino's Pizza? How you doing?
Good. My name's Jana Herdman and I acquired the Gambino's Pizza in Andover about a month ago and I'm requesting a cereal malt beverage license. Uh, I have been in the business with Gambino's Pizza for 20 years and currently hold licenses in other communities.
All right. Why would, why wouldn't this be on a consent agenda?
Not as a new one.
Really? Just to renewals?
Yeah, renewals are always on the consent agenda.
C R., you were getting ready to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the request, uh, for the enhanced beer license for the new owner for Love Gambino's Pizza at, uh, six twenty-six North Andover Road.
Second.
Question by C R., seconded by Mike to approve the cereal malt beverage license as presented. Further discussion? In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck, good luck to you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, item number 11, Prairie Creek Fourth Edition. We have a developer's agreement here?
Uh, you'll probably think this is deja vu because we've done all this before, but, uh, unfortunately, our bids on the water came in higher than the engineer's estimate and the petition would allow for. So our, uh, bond counsel and city attorney has informed us that we have to go through, uh, revising the developer's agreement, the water petition, the authorizing resolution, the work ordinance, and then ultimately accept these water and sewer bids. Uh, but we have to make the appropriate adjustments to these other documents before we do that, as we have gone over-
And you received amended letter of credits?
Yes, uh, that the CFO is shaking her head, yes, she worked that out with the developer and their bank.
That's always a bad deal when engineers, the winning bid.
Yeah.
Seems to be happening a lot. Okay, so you want to take them all one at a time? We'll start with the developer's agreement.
I'll start it.
Go on.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the revised developer's agreement between the City of Andover, Kansas and Prairie Creek Homes LLC reflecting an increase in the cost of water improvements in Prairie Creek Fourth Phase and further reflecting an amended letter of credit reflecting an increase in guarantee for water improvements and resulting special assessments from thirty-three thousand to fifty-five thousand.
Second.
Question by Troy and seconded by C R. to approve the revised developer's agreement as presented. Further discussion?
A question on the statement that you just made regarding the, them winning, being the winning bid. Is there an actual conflict of interest here that we need to really talk about or is that just kind of a?
For who?
For the, you said the winning bid was also the, the, um, engineering company?
No, I was making a joke.
Okay. Okay.
That's just kind of a sarcastic remark because we don't want our engineer to be the winning bid, but he won't actually do the work. We have to just negotiate with who the lowest bid was and that's-
Right.
Revolves all this other stuff.
So the engineer sets a probable estimate and if all the bids come in higher than that, typically, typically most of the time, I think we take the engineer's probable estimate, add 10% or so to give us some fluff, hoping that the petitions are sufficient to cover it. In this case, it was, they weren't. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, just making sure.
So the engineer was significantly lower than all of the bids to do the work. Um, so we have a motion by Troy and a seconded by C R. to approve the developer's agreement. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're on a roll. Keep it going.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised petition for water improvements in Prairie Creek Fourth Phase as recommended.
Second.
Question by Troy, seconded by C R. to approve the revised petition for water improvements as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're still up.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution amending Resolution nineteen dash eleven, authorizing improvements in Fourth Phase of Prairie Creek Edition in order to reflect increased costs for water improvements in such addition.
Second.
Question by Troy, seconded by C R. to approve the authorizing resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Ordinance seventeen sixteen of the City of Andover, Kansas in order to further authorize higher costs of water improvements in Fourth Phase of Prairie Creek Edition.
Second.
Question by Troy, seconded by C R. to approve the work ordinance as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right.
Separately. The petitions are separate from each other.
All right, well, regarding water and sewer bids, I'd like to make a motion to accept the low bid for Mees Construction of Wichita, Kansas for water line and sanitary sewer extensions in Prairie Creek Edition Fourth Phase in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Second.
Question by Troy, seconded by C R. to accept the low bid from Mees Construction, an amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and nine dollars for Prairie Creek's Fourth Edition Sewer. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12. Good evening, Rick.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor and Council, as you probably recall, in July, we brought to you Prairie Creek Fifth Water and Sewer plans for approval and the request to go out for bid. At the time, the stormwater drain plans, we were still working on some items on that and so we did not bring those at those time. Since then, we've got those plans, the issues corrected in that are satisfied in that, and we have approved those and they're requesting the acceptance of those plans and to bid those at the September tenth meeting and bring, I'm sorry, bid those and bring them back at the Sep- September tenth meeting for your approval and consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the plans and authorize the bidding of stormwater drain improvements for Prairie Creek Phase Five.
Second.
Question by Greg, seconded by Caroline to approve, uh, the plans and authorize the bidding of stormwater drain improvements as presented. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item thirteen. Library book fees.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think it's been a significant amount of times that the library last adjusted late fees. They're currently at fifteen cents, uh, per day and they're asking to go to 25 cents in match with, I think you saw the list of cities, uh, on there that were similar. Um, it is actually a revenue source that generates as much as $20,000 a year for them because people in Andover pay their late fees and want to, want to check out books again. So it's, it's a good revenue source for them and I think they just want to be in line with the neighboring communities.
Wow.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would move to adopt the ordinance as presented for the, um, amendment of library late fees.
So motion by Caroline, seconded by Brian to, uh, approve the, or amend this ordinance, uh, regarding library book late fees. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What, how did this get codified in the city's purveyance here?
My city attorney, I don't know why.
Can we just approve a resolution to let them establish?
Let them establish it.
The answer to your question is, we asked the same question at my office, but it was in the code and they wanted to increase it, so we signed off on the draft ordinance. It, it's a, it's a law.
What else is in there we don't know about?
The, the code? Lots.
Item fourteen, standard traffic ordinances.
Mr. Mayor, this is the adoption and the incorporation of the two thousand nineteen standard traffic ordinances prepared by the League of Municipalities for traffic control within the city. There were a number of changes in state law over the course of the last year and each year the League of Municipalities incorporates those into one standard traffic ordinance that can be adopted by all cities. Most cities do that. Andover is one of those cities. Um, this traffic ordinance includes all the changes that were made in state law up until its publication. And if you're interested in what some of those are, I'd be delighted to go over them with you briefly. If you're not, I will not.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I, I'm going to be ve- very brief, but, um, because it might be interesting. Uh, it used to be unlawful, uh, outright to refuse to take a breath test and, um, it was considered a citable offense to refuse to take a breath test. They were worried about constitutional issues with that as it relates to self-incrimination. As I understand it, that was deleted from state law, so it's been deleted from your code. To be clear, I was hesitant to bring this up because I'm not encouraging anyone to either drive drunk or to refuse a breath test. I'm just telling you that there's not an immediately citable event for not, uh, doing the breath test right away and making them, uh, get a warrant first to do the breath test. It used to be that you, uh, had to stop for, uh, things that were on railroad tracks, including trains, and they've broadened that term to include other track equipment. So actually, if there were a truck or something else on the tracks that you've maybe seen sometimes, you have to stop for those two. You, you, you can't just stop for the trains now. They've expanded that. Um, it used to be that A T Vs and utility worksite vehicles, these are the three and four-wheelers you're imagining, and then those utility work trucks, uh, that you're familiar with were just outright illegal. Uh, the new state law allows cities to legalize those for operations under very, very limited circumstances, mostly agricultural use. Your standard traffic ordinance does not legalize them. It just recognizes that if you did legalize them, what the rules would be. And so this really isn't a change for Andover. You'd have to make that change separately and independently if you wanted to allow the operation of A T Vs and U T Vs on the road. Some of you may recall that you did this for, uh, golf carts a while back and it, it's a similar circumstance where it now allows it and governs it, but it, it doesn't specifically allow it. The city would have to take action to do that. Uh, it also, for the first time, defines electric-assisted scooters, which I'm sure you've seen around and subjects them to the same regulations as bicycles. They were kind of this nonexistent, what are they? Are they a skateboard? What are they? And basically, for purposes of the standard traffic ordinances, they have to now follow all the same rules that bicycles would have to follow as it relates to the state law. In addition, um, the state law did allow, uh, cities to allow operators of, um, ride-sharing companies to place light on their top. Uh, it used to be that only a taxi could do that. Um, and so they recognized by state law that an Uber and a Lyft can do that as well to help identify themselves. Uh, it has to be a color different than red. Um, this S T O. will actually change the law in the City of Andover allowing those. Those would not previously have been allowed. And the league assumed that, that would be something people would want to allow and so it will allow those, uh, lights to be located on the top so long as they're a color different than red for purposes of, uh, Uber and Lyft services. You used to could not, uh, tint your windshield at all, um, but, uh, there was a, a young boy in Kansas who was allergic to the sun, who had never been allowed to drive a car. And so now if you have a doctor's note and you meet the specifications of, uh, transmission of at least 70% of, of light through the windshield, uh, you can tint your windshield if that's necessary for you to drive a car. Um, there's obvious reasons why this, uh, is discouraged generally as it relates to law enforcement. But if you have a physician's note that says you are allergic to the sun and cannot drive a car without tinting your windshield, you are allowed, uh, to tint your windshield for the first time.
Like Altamir or Grafix, whatever it's called now, tints windshield, windows all the time. So you're saying it was actually illegal to tint a window?
No, it was illegal to tint the windshield.
Oh, the front.
The front. And, 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 and back windows and, and actually back door windows, lots of cars tint those to the legal limit. And there's a legal limit established for how dark those can be. Uh, and this is, this is actually slightly lighter than that, but allows people who are allergic to sun to operate an automobile.
Okay, thanks.
I, I don't think will have a huge effect for most of you. The law made it very clear because some cities were behaving differently that not wearing your seatbelt is just a traffic infraction, not a misdemeanor. You cannot be charged with a misdemeanor crime. Uh, you can only be charged with a traffic infraction for not wearing your seatbelt. Um, other interesting items, it used to be that if you just bought a motorcycle and it had a temporary tag on it, you could drive it home without a motorcycle license. You cannot do that anymore. If you do not have an M. on your driver's license, you cannot drive a motorcycle, period. They changed the state law requiring you to hand over your license to a police officer when they requested it. I feel bad that I've actually, uh, noted this law before. The law did not say that you had to hand over your, uh, license to drivers, to a police officer. It said you just had to display it. And so, um, you know, obfuscational people like myself would say, I'll show it to you, but I'm not going to give it to you. They've changed that law. You have to give it to them now, so don't, don't, don't do that. If they ask you for your driver's license, uh, give it to them because it's now a crime not to do so. Uh, also, a judge for the first time can waive the driver's license reinstatement fee. Uh, there's a fee associated after your driver's license revoked, get it reinstated. I believe it's $25. And if that's a real hardship for somebody for the first time, a judge can waive it, which they could not do before. This is my best summary of some of the more interesting and effective changes, but if the chief has some that I missed that he thinks is important, he can.
I guess I just have one question on the show the license thing. So is that during a traffic infraction or?
No, in fact, in fact, in my, in my circumstance where I said I need a driver's license to walk down the street, I was young and silly and the officer said, no, but when you get in that-
Three weeks ago?
But when you get in that car over there, you're going to need one, so, uh, yeah, if you, if you have a driver's license and, uh, officer requests it, you have to give it to them, you know, remove it from your purse or, or wallet and hand them your driver's license. That is, that is-
Don't they give you a certificate that's a substitute?
Oh, it, the law doesn't affect that they could keep it. Um, the, the law just says that if they want to, if they want to hold it and possess it and take it back to their car to run your name and whatever, they can do that. It, it used to be that there was confusion where you had to display it. So, um, someone argued that they don't have to hand their driver's license over to the officer. You can just look at it, um, because I'm not giving it to you. And that law's been changed to where if they ask you for it, you have to give it to them. Uh, it will be against the law not to give it to them to take their driver's-
If I'm walking down the road and, you know, I look like I'm causing problems or not and someone says, hand me your papers, I don't have to. I feel like it's not Germany in World War II. So why in the hell would I have to give a license to a police officer if they just ask if I'm not doing something?
If you're operating a motor vehicle and you're, and you're required to have your license in your possession and hand it over to the officer when requested.
That's not what I'm talking about.
Okay, but that's what this is talking about. You do not need to possess a driver's license if you're walking down the street. It is not- It is not, it is not illegal to walk down the street without a driver's license.
Been watching too many YouTube.
If you.
Perhaps. I don't know.
And to be clear, not that this.
If I'm out on the corner of the street over here not driving and for some weird reason.
He wants to know if you ask him to identify himself, whether he has to or he doesn't.
Yeah.
That's what he wants to know. Who are you? Where do you live? What's your name?
If.
Do you have to answer?
If an officer has a reason, probable cause to ask you your name or whether or not you have a driver's license, I'm just going to tell you my personal advice is to give it to them. But I'm not going to give legal advice to the citizenry today on whether or not you're required to do so if you're not operating an automobile at the time you are asked. I will tell you, you are not required to possess a driver's license unless you are driving a motor vehicle under most circumstances.
Okay.
And it doesn't, it doesn't matter for purposes of today's STO because this is a state law, so I don't, we're just.
I know, it took us in a weird spot. I don't apologize though, because it's pretty scary to think that that could be a thing, and it sounds like it is, actually, so. Thank you. Yeah. Okay, so.
Very entertaining.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the brief summary of the changes to the STO.
You're welcome.
All right. Motion by Troy, second by Brian to approve the 2019 STO as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to the Uniform Public Offensive Code, Offense Code, excuse me.
This is the, Mr. Mayor, this is the Uniform Public Offense Code regarding non-traffic-related offenses, criminal offenses, and it takes your ordinances and make them match with the state. Before I will ask whether or not you want a summary, I will just simply say, there's really only one major change, so I'll just tell you that it has to do with the affirmative defenses that are allowed for having the hallucinogenic THC component of marijuana in your possession. Many of you have probably seen CBD oils and things for sale, and it's my understanding that some people who use those will occasionally test positive for marijuana use because the science, even though all of the hallucinogenic THC is removed from the marijuana, it's impossible to remove all of it. So some people who are using CBD oils may in fact be ingesting the THC component on, not on purpose, and certainly not without any effect in such minute detail that you would never know it, but that you would test positive for it. So this creates an affirmative defense. If you have a physician's note that says you are on treatment using CBD and that you are tested and then test positive for THC, it will be one affirmative defense to say, "I'm on this treatment because the doctor ordered me to do so." I want anybody to be confused to think that this legalizes medical marijuana or any other kind of marijuana in the state of Kansas. It does not. It just basically addresses the technical testing problem. That occasionally CBD users will test positive for THC in their system because it can't entirely be removed from that compound, is the way I understand it. That's the principal and only change to the UPOC. The rest are all amendments that clean up the UPOC, make it more user-friendly, and have to do with making it fit state law better, as I'm aware. The rest are not changes. So if you have any other questions about the UPOC, I'd be delighted to try and answer them. Chief, did I miss anything?
I need to throw mine away then.
Get a doctor's note. Boy, you cannot walk down the street with that.
Chief, do you have something to add here?
Do I have something? No, sir.
Your finger's on the button.
In case there was questions.
Eagerly anticipating it. Well, unless there's no questions, I would entertain a motion here.
I make that motion to adopt an ordinance enacting the 2019 Uniform Public Offense Code 35th Edition as modified therein and incorporated by reference amending chapters 13, Article 1, Section 13-101 and 13-102 of the Code of the City of Andover, Kansas.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Caroline to approve the ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen would be in executive session. This is for non-elected personnel, so.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to recess into executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319, Prenz B1, meeting to include governing body, city administrator, and city attorney for an approximate 20 minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by CR, second by Greg, go into executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B, Prenz B1. The meeting will include the governing body, city administrator, city attorney for approximately 20 minutes. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Brian, I believe, to come out of executive session. Further discussion. In favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yeah?
Go ahead and make the next motion to recess an executive session for consultation with the city attorney pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, parentheses B two, for matters deemed privileged in the attorney-client privilege relationship. The meeting will include the governing body, city administrator, assistant city administrator, AFR reserves division chief, and city attorney. The open meeting will resume in the council chambers in ten minutes, which is eight-thirty.
Second.
Motion by Troy, second by Greg, to go in executive session for the all aforementioned reasons. Further discussion. In favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Okay, counsel, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
Motion by Greg, second by Brian to come out of executive session, further discussion. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're back in regular sessions, I believe, down to member items, is that right?
Yeah.
Uh, Brian, would you like to start us off?
I don't have anything tonight.
Caroline?
Uh, yes, I have a couple items, um, just briefly. First of all, the, um, discussion we had about possibility of allowing people, there's to hire, like a goat herd, and that people come with the goat herd, I guess, and, and, keep eye over the goat, but for some kind of a grazing. So it's a service, it's not like the, the residents are gonna own these goats, or make, keep these goats overnight, or, or have goats, you know. But evidently, the way our ordinance is written, Andover is a community where this company that does this service can't come in and do it, whereas it can be done in Wichita and other neighboring communities, but not Andover. So, it's not like I'm going to hire this myself, but evidently, there is some interest for it, and if we need to redo our ordinance, possibly look at how it's written by the city, Wichita and these other cities, that it works, and why ours doesn't. If there's, if we all agree to it, we might ask the, um, I guess it would be the police chief to come up with an ordinance that would make this allowable.
I think that would be our attorney that would have to write it.
Okay, attorney, whoever does that. Sorry, attorney.
Okay, so you're in favor, you're in favor of changing our ordinance to allow people with goats for hire to come in and place them on a piece of property, presumably to eat noxious weeds or vegetation and clear the land?
Right, and I think that this is, uh, this isn't people, I'm sure that it's not gonna be done in the normal, neighborhood, normal neighborhoods with lawns. I, I think this is more, like you're saying, in, um, community areas, maybe in some of the neighborhoods. That's who I was contacted by that was interested in this, where the terrain is a little more rugged, and-
Rocky.
You know, you've got little creek areas, et cetera. It was something they wanted to do, um, said, hey, we found out we can't do it in Andover, but everybody else can, is there anything that we could do about that? And I said, well, I'll look into it, so.
I guess, me, I don't have a problem with, with it on its face, but I would wanna know more about what any negative consequences of having a whole bunch of goats running around could have, I mean, get loose, who's responsible, tear up somebody else's yard, who's responsible, um, some kind of, I don't know, detriment to, I mean, there's, on its face, it sounds fine to me, too, but I just don't wanna agree to something just 'cause it sounds cool and trendy, I guess.
No, I understand. I, I don't have any details on the company, but I do know, at least, that it was, they stay with their herd, they don't drop off some goats, they, they are there with that herd, watching it, but I, I don't know if they use some kind of temporary, I, I have no idea. I just said, this is something that we might look into, if it's being done. I don't think it's something that you'll have a goat herd in your community every week, you know, I, I don't think it'll happen very often. In other words.
I think Greg should add that to his lawn care business.
The goat herder.
Well, I think Susan maybe knows someone?
Barnard Weed Warriors.
It's called what?
Barnard Weed Warriors, a business, it's a business. And I believe they're exactly right, they don't leave goats, they come in, and the picture's on Facebook, um, you know, it's dirt and, and junk, you know, it's not a lawn grower, they're coming in and they're cleaning up all of the stuff that you have to cut down with, I don't know, we were talking about, they resident their, uh, weed dirts or-
Right, it's not, yeah.
I don't know, Les, you're the resident goat specialist, what do you have to say?
There's a company out of Manhattan that had called me earlier in the spring to see if the city had any properties that we needed brushed, cleaned up, and, and I had, I had heard about this, gosh, it's been four or five years ago, in Hollywood, California. There, you know, California's essentially a desert, and there were some drainage ways in the city of Hollywood that the city couldn't keep up with the maintenance on, and a person came along and herded goats through this waterway to clean up all of the brush. So it's, like Troy said, it's kind of a, a trendy thing, kinda like chickens in the backyard.
Yeah, well.
Well, it's just that, as, when I read our ordinance, it didn't even seem to me like it would apply to what this is. I, that seemed to me more like telling people they couldn't own goats, and this is obviously just a service that comes in, but if we need to do something that amends our ordinance, that-
Let's do this.
Happens, then.
Before we task our city attorney of rewriting an ordinance, I need to see that there's a, um, majority that want to do this.
Right, that's what I, that's why I wanted to, if no one else, then that's fine.
Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion that we add it to, like, maybe a permit fee, I mean, that it's, uh, it's looked at in certain areas that you just can't do this anywhere you want to, that it actually goes to public works, or whatever, and, or building, or wha- whatever department that is, and the person says, I want to use it for this piece of property, and then we issue them a permit for that, uh, not that anybody can just, you know, do it in anyone's yard they want to do it in.
I might state my position is that there must be some reason, all these years we have prohibited the same, I'm not persuaded by Caroline's argument that it's something that we wanna do. So I'm, I'm skeptical, but I can be convinced at some point, but I would hate to have lawyers spend twenty hours drafting an, an ordinance that, uh-
Mayor may not pass, yeah.
Right, right, well, that's why I'm asking you all, and I agree with that completely, I'm, but I would just say that if I find out that we're the only community around where this isn't allowed, then I don't know how, how our ordinance is written, that's different from these other communities where, where people can have this kind of service. So that was just my concern, we usually try to stay in line with what Wichita is doing.
I'm really not prepared to go either way, 'cause I, I wanna do more research on it.
I wouldn't wanna see an open ordinance.
Yeah, I would like to also have a little bit more information on it, and yeah, they said everybody around allows it, but do they really?
Can we, um-
I, I would just say presumably that there's nothing unique that I'm aware of about the city's ordinance about keeping livestock that's any different than any other city, so, uh-
What I was gonna say is, can we place a call to City Wichita, somebody, somebody in their code compliance, uh, office and inquire, what is that, what mechanism is it allowed, or are they just ignoring it when it happens?
Okay, that's a good way to, yeah, sure, okay.
Yeah, I was, yeah, I already got that.
Yeah, okay, the only other thing I, um, get some feedback on that, but, um, just wanted to say that, um, I'm sure there's other people out there in the community, but in this past week, I've had a lot of time working with the, um, Wichita area greater plain, Greater Plains Wichita area agency on agency, aging, and of course, our own Butler County Department on Aging, and I know that there are lots of people caring for elderly parents in the home, and I happen to be one of those doing that, and it gets more and more difficult, and, um, I just wanted to say those agencies are really great, if you reach out to them, you find out that there's, the caregiver can get a lot of help from those agencies as well, and I'll probably be contacting our fire department. Also, I'm understanding that these devices for the elderly, that you're worried that they'll fall, which is the problem that I've been having with my mother, and, um, that it's like motion detector, not just to push the button, because that might not work, sometimes they might not even remember to push a button, so that you wanna be sure you're getting the kind of device that detects the fall, that it's not that person has to call for help with the button. But then, what if, and which is my concern, because I come to meetings like this, so what if that caregiver isn't at home, and then you're gonna get your house broken into because you're not there, but you can set up a line of who gets notified, but I'm understanding from my research on it, is that usually our fire rescue, or that maybe a key to my home could be, is that, is that how you work that out? Do you have other people that are doing that within the community?
Ask the question about the key part, again?
Well, you know, other than putting a lockbox on my home, that you, somehow you are able to do that with people that are caregivers, that might have someone in their home who you might get a signal from, like, I understand the call should go first to say me, but then I might say, no, you need to call 911, and then you're gonna get the call.
Well, a lot, a lot of that will go through our dispatch, we have dispatch notes, and we have notes in our CAD, in our, in our vehicles, that'll, that'll have call notes, and, uh, different options to get ahold of people, and they have like a, basically a list they can go down to, kinda like they do with, with an alarm company, um, for PD, for burger alarms.
But you ultimately, at some point, if no one, 'cause if a person falls in their home, they oftentimes will have a locked door, and they can't get to the door, they've fallen, so I'm just curious as to what your method is then, and-
To gain access.
To gain, so, we will, um, typically, uh, request PD out there, um, to assist us if we're gonna gain access.
I guess what I'm getting at still, though, I don't want my door rammed down, is there some way that we know the providers that are around our community that might come, emergency, that we can give them a code to get in our home, or anything like, and I'm just curious, 'cause that was the next thing I thought of.
Well, a lot of the, uh, frequent flyer, flyers, we'll call it, um, you know, we have, um, notes on that, we also have hidden key locations that we have notes on.
So you do work-
Things like that, that are relayed to our crews, or that we just know, um-
Well, anyway, I just, I'm sure there, I know there are more and more of us out there that are caring for elderly parents, and I'm sure that it becomes more and more taxing on your services as well, but-
Well, unlike, for instance, the Life Alert type buttons that you're talking about, uh, when their dispatch calls our 911 dispatch, they will relay the key information to them, and then our dispatchers can go over a secure frequency and tell us, your key is under a rock in the backyard, or, you know, whatever.
Right.
So, yeah, that, that happens quite frequently, but-
Well-
As far as a list of who's responding to the, to the residents, I'm not sure that we have that.
Well, I just, again, wanna repeat that, so people are aware of it, it's the Greater Plains Area Agency on Agency, uh, area agency on aging, which is really, I think it's actually a federal thing, I mean, it's, it's regional, anyway, and, and then you have your county department on aging as well, but both, all, just amazing the kind of information you can get from them, and the options of ways that you can get help, just wanted to share that with the community, and that's all for me.
Troy?
Yeah, one thing, I was asked to be on the board of Tri-County CASA, so at some point in the near future, I'll probably do a presentation on it here to this body, and kinda update on everybody what that is, I think most people here already know, but if not, I'll end up doing that, so, that's all.
So you're on?
Uh, just a couple things, I thought the workshop meeting we had last night was really good for me, and that was the presentation of USD 385, the video that they prepared was first class, and it was the first time I've really seen all the activities that they have. You talk about moving parts, it's unbelievable, but they did a wonderful job, the architect, contractor, engineers and so forth were, were marvelous on that thing. I, I also appreciated, uh, I guess Les had folks from KDOT down here with, uh, the Trans Systems folks about removal of one of the bridges that we're gonna be looking into, that, uh, if that is feasible, that might save us an awful lot of money. And, and lastly, to the, uh, many kudos to our executive treasurer on the audit that was gone over last night, uh, that fellow did a really nice job of trying to teach us some things, and, uh, and obviously has a very high regard of your accounting skills, and we look to be in pretty good shape, uh, monetarily, and I appreciate all that. That's all I have.
Great, no items.
Uh, couple here, um, I was just looking through all the concert information that we did last year, we did this year, and is, is it looking like we were down a little bit from the year before?
Two of the four concerts last year were free, so yes, we were down, weren't down in revenues comparatively, but attendance, yes, and, and I would definitely point to the fact that those two of the four were free last year, none of the three this year were free.
And I was out town for the Groove and Groove, how was, how did that go?
Late. It went, it went really well, it did-
What their attendance was?
I think I've heard guesses, around four or five.
He was guessing around forty-five hundred.
Wow.
Both nights. We did have an issue, their, their last act on the Friday night gospel side showed up extremely late, and it, that concert ended at twelve oh two AM, and it was really loud. Uh, we did get some complaints about that, um, we also got complaints on Saturday night, but we always get a few complaints after every concert, so. But it was, it was well attended, no events, I think they had one, uh, heat, uh, type of related incident.
We had, uh, two incidents, uh, for, over the two-night period, one involved an intoxicated individual that didn't wanna leave, and then another one involved a heat-related incident that was minor.
It's good, it's a good concert, good food, good music.
Um, I have one thing to say, I was approached by-
I have one thing to say, I was approached by the Hereford House staff, is it possible, they wanted to know if it's possible, they're having a hard time getting people into their facility, with 159th being one way, because they get a lot of people that pull up to, like, heading north, and they get to Central, and it's, or, they get to Central and 159th Street's closed, they have no idea how to even get in there. And the city of Wichita has put up signs and stuff before redirecting traffic, and unfortunately, the redirect traffic has to go through the neighborhood at that point, but they wanted to know if there's anything you can do, because they're, they got some angry customers on their hands, actually.
I will meet with the engineers and see if we can come up with a plan for that, because this, this will be an extended closing, off and on for the next, over a year.
They've already gone through that with that tunnel under there a while back, and that, that really seemed to hurt their business, but if you could discuss possible solutions, that would be great, and reach out to Hereford House staff, discuss what we can or can't do.
Yeah, I really think that would be only a redirection through the neighborhood, but that still would not be that much traffic unless someone was having a big function or something, but I don't.
You could still, you could still access, it's education, you could still access it if you're headed south, but a lot of people don't, you just have to redirect them around a whole square mile to do that. Anything else? Let's get out of here.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
The second, Brian?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.